Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, May twenty first, two thousand twenty four. It is nine A M. And we're here today for a special meeting, primarily dealing with the ongoing disasters we keep having. This time we have four members of the court present, but the court in this meeting is called order. If there one please rise for the pledge, I'm sorry, the invitation and then the pledge. Yeah, Lord, I want to thank you for all the men and women that work so hard for Hardin County, who've gone through quite a bit over the past six weeks as a county, uh, not just the employees and the, and the, uh, citizens, but, uh, but everybody throughout the state of Texas with all of these disasters that keep happening. While we appreciate the rain, Lord, we pray that it stops for at least a little while so we can recover. Thank you for all the first responders, and that includes the road and bridge personnel. Everyone who have, uh, you know, worked so hard to make sure the citizens are protected as best as possible. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
And I'll pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, General.
Yes, sir. Can you fix the chair? Can you remind me, please? Thank you.
Sheriff.
Number three, consider approval of request by me to authorize a thirty day continuation of declaration of disaster issued on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty four, resulting from the ongoing spring severe weather and flooding event in Hardin County.
Sir.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? What we'll do under the, uh, discussion line item is, uh, I'll open it to, uh, everyone to talk about any, uh, response activities that y'all have had going on. I know the sheriff wanted to say a few things, and Mr. Tucker has an update for us as well. So we'll do all that under number six, if that's okay with you.
Alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider approval, approval of request by Judge Wayne McDaniel to transfer funds within the general fund, zero, one, zero, for the purpose of completing renovations and repairs in the small district courtroom as follows. And before I read that out, I'm just gonna ask you all to table this item. Uh, the reason is, uh, Mrs. Gore reminded me yesterday that we have a court facility fee fund, and there's enough money there to handle these repairs. And so I'll put that on the next agenda and include the correct fund number.
Move to table.
Say.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, to table line item number four, and it'll be on the May twenty eighth agenda with the right information. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five, discussion and possible action regarding discretionary exemption for professional services, independent auditing services pursuant to local government code two, six, two, oh, two, four. If approved, consider authorization for candidate to sign engagement letter with Pro L L P for outside audit for the year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty three, with option for two subsequent fiscal years. That last sentence where it says with option for two subsequent, subsequent fiscal years, that needs to be, uh, striked out. This is actually, uh, we've already signed this letter with, uh, Belt Paris Pahachek. They were, uh, recently, uh, I don't know if it's a merger or buyout by Pro L L P. And so we need to now sign the engagement letter with the new, uh, company, Pro L L P, and that will allow them to complete the audits that they're working on for fiscal year twenty three. And sometime in August or September, we will, uh, have the, uh, letter to, uh, sign for the engagement for fiscal year twenty four. I got it right?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Sorry.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item six, discussion on any other non-intent item without taking action, including reports from related officials and department heads, or announcements which may be of interest to the public. At this time, uh, would either commissioners like to talk about the, uh, ongoing response that y'all have been making to all the disasters that started back on April the ninth?
Uh, I'm sure it's-
Just talk about what's been going on in your precinct, all y'all had to do, if you want to.
I'm sure it's across the board, uh, for each one of us. I know, uh, I'm staying in contact with Ernie pretty often, uh, and it certainly is on, uh, I think root bottom roads, what he had in Cooks Lake Road where he had his problems, but, uh, most of mine is, is, is the usual down, uh, off of Andover Obomont, uh, Millers Creek Road, Massey Lake Road. In fact, my foreman just informed me before I come in here that, uh, now for the third time that we're fixing to do some extensive, uh, repairs on the bridge, uh, down there that, that we've done twice, uh, there's no way we could have waited, uh, because we had to get it open for the, for the public getting back and forth on, but we're dealing with it as it comes. Right now, also, uh, thank you for the, uh, star request to the state. We are hauling. I think Commissioner, uh, Young is as well, and, uh, Chris hasn't got over there yet, but, uh, uh, Ernie's crew is with us hauling, uh, the material, and it's gonna come in handy for me, so.
Good, good deal.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Same thing, we'll be hauling next week. Uh, we put all of our staff on cleaning, uh, the trees off of the rightways. Uh, we worked, was it Thursday night at Blinn?
Mm-hmm.
Till Friday morning at two thirty A M. And, uh, so, uh, we got roadways cleared, and then we spent all day yesterday picking up. We hope to be done by five o'clock today, picking up, but if not, it'd be a few hours in the morning. Uh, dealing with, uh, a huge washout on, uh, Daniel Road and things, uh, that, uh, we're working on this morning. We'll go back up to Gorstore, uh, on the Bob's Cove with the head washed out. And then, uh, we're still in the Magnolia area, uh, the Ghost Creek Road back there, and then Magnolia itself at the bridge. Uh, we have to go back in and repair it again, and then John's Lake, we're still waiting on the river to go down, uh, so that we can discover what size of crater we have. Uh, and so, uh, what I'll say, I brag on the citizens, uh, nearly all of them have been understanding and supporting. And, uh, that's a, uh, that's a credit to them. We have had some that are upset, and I understand that. Our main concern in precinct two is, uh, is gonna be, uh, Mill Creek. It drains all of Candyhead, drains the L P plant, all of, we're like the sheriff and I live, and when it's full, it just ventures out. And so, uh, that's our biggest concern is Mill Creek, and then of course the levels of creek are still up today. Mill Creek is still up. So any significant rain is gonna create another flood, so. Uh, you know, I know that y'all have been educating people, but sometimes people forget that the U S Corps of Engineer has to give us permission to get in that creek. Uh, you have the waters of the U S who under a democratic precedent is more strictly enforced. Corps of Engineer is much more micromanaging under, uh, a democratic precedent. And sometimes I think what we can just get in and do, we can't. We have to have permission to do that. So I'll just reiterate that today.
Thank you, Commissioner, sir. Commissioner Young?
Basically the same story, uh, we're redoing roadwork that we had just finished last week. Um, we've cleared out close to a hundred trees that have fallen across the roadways. Um, we just had one fall last night for no reason, took out some power lines and pine wood. Um, thank you for the material request that will really come in handy. We would like to be doing other projects instead of the same ones. This is the third time in a couple of months, but, um, outlaw bend area, big figure retreat. There's still a little bit of water over the roads, so we'll probably be able to get in there tomorrow to really, uh, fix those washouts that are up there. Um, just same thing, appreciate the citizens that are being understanding. Some of them have even apologized that we have to come work on their road again. Um, and we just ask that the, the remaining citizens be understanding that we would like to be doing other projects, but we have to do this first, so.
Thank you all and the people for all they've done to, to make sure that the, uh, roads are open again and then, uh, safe to drive on. Like, uh, all of you have said, y'all, y'all done this three times now since April the eighth. Hopefully this is it. I just asked the Lord to hold off on any more rain for a while, hopefully he'll listen. Uh, Sheriff, did you want to add anything? Thank you for, for coming in.
You bet, you bet. Yeah, I mean, you know, I think we're all taxed. We've, we've, uh, our staff's been running camp and camp daylight to dark, and that's, that's, uh, with all, with every division throughout, throughout the county, somebody's contributed something, uh, across the board. Primarily what we've done is, is on the traditional law enforcement side, a lot of traffic control, a lot of barricade management, um, monitoring roads, trying to liaison back and forth between textile, uh, when something's passable, uh, when it's not, when it's, uh, when it's safe to open, uh, of course we rely on the expertise for them to come out and inspect before they're gonna open something to the general public, and that takes a little while, and so again, you talk about patience. Um, when that water goes down, we want to be the first one to drive through there again. And sometimes you need to take a look at bridges and culverts and check the integrity of that, and so we've done a lot of that, um, a lot of, uh, a lot of security around some of these staging parking areas where there's been overflow parking. Hadn't been able to get into a neighborhood and the cars are, are parked up in a, in a location. It's an easy target for thieves, uh, for burglars and so, there's been a lot of extra patrol going on in those areas to try to keep an eye on those cars that are untended. Um, we fielded several drone requests for aerial surveillance. We've, we've done that on a lot of county roads, a couple of infrastructure projects. Um, that's been very beneficial. You know, that, I envisioned that program really taking off several years ago and, and, and materializing, and I think it's kind of exceeded all of our expectations on what we've got out of that. Uh, we get a lot of requests. Uh, we spent, spent, uh, a couple of hours up in Tyler County helping them, doing some stuff around Ivanhoe, trying to give them a, an assessment, some stuff over off of, uh, one of the foreign market roads between, between sixty-nine and, and, uh, Warren and Hillister moving back to the east. So a lot of time there, I mean, just gives us so much more of a, of a, of a view from above to get into flooded areas where we don't have to risk employees' safety and damage county vehicles to try to get in and look at something. That's been a big help as well. Um, provided quite a bit of, of E O C assistance, I think, uh, helping, helping Aaron and his, uh, his office field some phone calls and run some errands and go take a look at this and looking at crest points for rivers and creeks and trying to make a, you know, an educated decision. Big, uh, big shout out to, to my staff, all of this while being down about twenty percent in patrol, uh, and that's tough. Uh, we've got a lot of vacancies on patrol side. It's very competitive right now in law enforcement, extremely competitive. Uh, we're all fighting for the same employees, the applicant pool, and there's just not enough to go around. And we, uh, I've got three vacancies in patrol. I've got one that graduates the academy tomorrow. I'm hoping that gives us a little bit of relief. Uh, still got two more, and it's hard. It's hard to find, it's hard to find somebody who wants to get into law enforcement in today's society and climate. Uh, that's very sad, uh, but it's reality. And so the bottom line is that we all, uh, Lumberston has an opening, uh, the S Os around us have openings. And again, we're fighting, we're fighting for all of the same applicant pool, and it's who can dangle the best carrot in front of that applicant to get his attention and get him to come on board, and so, um, I appreciate what you've done in the past to try to get our pay and our, our benefits competitive. Uh, that has helped. Uh, but make no mistake, we're still gonna face that challenge moving forward. Um, everybody is trying to come up with something that the other employer doesn't have to try and get that potential, uh, employee on board, to get them a job offer and get them hired. And, and so we'll continue to, to work with what we have and try to fill those vacancies, but I refuse to sacrifice our standards and our integrity for hiring somebody that just would not be a good fit for our county or for the citizens. And so we'll maintain with what we have until we have a good applicant.
You mentioned assisting emergency management, so I just wanted to kind of call some names here, hopefully I don't forget anybody, but, uh, Chief Minton, Captain Custer, and Lieutenant Sanford, they've been very helpful to me and Aaron both through emergency management, and I thank you for allowing them to do that, and it's been very helpful.
You bet. Thank y'all.
And if I forgot somebody, please add them to the, to the list, but.
And I'll say this too, Sheriff, we've asked for y'all's help closing down roads and stuff, and, uh, your staff has been professional, prompt, uh, I mean, A plus from, from my side. I appreciate the help. Cause I know y'all, I know y'all are taxed, and when we ask for y'all, I know that's a big ask, but y'all always fulfilled it, and I appreciate that.
Yes, thank y'all.
Aaron, the sheriff brought up a point, uh, you probably stay one step ahead of all of us. I know, uh, on the law enforcement side, those drones definitely, the technology and everything is, is coming in hand. Do we have any emergency management?
No, sir, we do not. We utilize the sheriff's office drones. Uh, in, in fact, not only do we utilize them, the state, so T M, uh, sends requests for, uh, the sheriff's office and their drone operators because they're the best in the area, is what the state is telling us at this point, so, uh, we do not have any.
Is that extensive, pretty extensive training for the operator?
It is, it is. You, you must be an F A A certified pilot or operate that, and from a liability standpoint for us to have, uh, tech cover us for general liability, there's some things that, that we've gotta do to make sure that you're not gonna crash the drone into somebody's house, or you're not gonna, you know, I mean, there's certain things you have to do, and there's certain places you can fly and not fly, uh, without permission.
Yeah.
And, and so, uh, and, and that's on the, on the civil service side of things. It has nothing to do with the L E or the law enforcement side. Uh, but yes, it's a pretty, I have two certified, and I have a third person that's in the pilot training right now. And, and so, uh, the equipment itself, it's expensive, but it's just not, I mean, it's not a, a total obstacle. It's, it's the time it takes to get somebody through that training, get them approved, and get their, their drone operator license.
Now, I just want to add what Aaron just said, that, uh, T M specifically requested that Hardin County Sheriff, uh, sent some people, I think, I know you went to Tyler County. Did y'all go to Jasper County as well?
Um, we were out at Nature's River, uh, quite a bit, helping on some, on some stuff. We've been in Tyler County several times.
And they had people here that could do it, and, and, uh, Mike and Carmen and a couple of others said, uh, no, we got the best in the area right here at Hardin County, and they asked the sheriff to do it, and he said, no problem, we'll get it done. So, we appreciate that. I want to add one quick thing about response. Uh, y'all talked about everything that y'all have done, and the citizens jumped in and helped and cleared roads just like they always do. We're very appreciative of that. Several of the fire departments always help, and they did again this time, and so we want to thank them as well. I know for a fact that Silky Fire Department got out and assisted over in precinct two, and maybe some in precinct one as well. Uh, we're on the west side, all three of those fire departments jumped in, uh, you know, those are volunteers coming out and getting on a chainsaw and equipment and clearing roads. Uh, Botothicip, Saratoga, and Batson. If any others did, you know, make sure that we, uh, name them here, but I know those four fire departments came out and helped, and we appreciate them doing that. And I only know of one injury during the, uh, clearing process, and that was a citizen over in the Botothicip area. I think he was cutting a tree off of a driveway or a roadway or something, and I met him, hit him in the back of the head, and, uh, we couldn't stop the bleeding, so they took him to the hospital, but I think he was treated and released, thank goodness, but, uh, that's usually when we see our injuries, you know, somebody got cut with a chainsaw or something, and that's always very, it's a disaster, really a disaster, and we did not have any, anything major like that. Aaron, uh, y'all went out yesterday and did some, uh, damage assessments for individual assistance. Do you have any numbers ready to provide?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, so basically, I've just got a quick severe weather overview of some numbers, so, uh, please continue, everybody in the room and, and everybody that, that can hear this, please continue to urge citizens to complete I stat reports. The Q R code and a link can be found on the county judge's Facebook page, as well as Office of Emergency Management Facebook page. Severe weather, uh, damage can be reported from flooding to wind damage, as well as hail damage. Even if the residents, uh, or business isn't sure, that data is still needed to be captured and will assist in meeting the threshold for FEMA individual assistance, helping citizens throughout this county. Current ver- unverified numbers, uh, as of this morning, we have two destroyed, uh, structures, twenty-four major impacted, uh, affected structures, forty minor and twenty affected, totaling ninety-six, uh, residential and or business structures. Uh, as far as on the infrastructure slash public assistance side, uh, current unverified amounts, uh, Hardin County has submitted five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars of damages and or emergency protective measures. To T M, uh, the county threshold is two hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. The state threshold is fifty-three million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine, and the state being at a hundred and fifty-four million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars currently. Please continue to report, uh, damages slash emergency protective measures to my office, uh, so we can go out and complete P stats and get them put into the T M portal. Uh, that way, uh, once we are, are hopefully, uh, declared for public assistance and individual assistance, we can start submitting the paperwork uh, for reimbursement of the emergency protective measures as far as, as making that one roadway, that one bridge, uh, usable, and then also start the projects of making these roads whole again, making them back to they were, the way they were before storms, and possibly some mitigation as well to help this not occur in the future. Any questions?
I just want to add that we're s- we're still wrapping up from Harvey, uh, Public Assistance Up in twenty seventeen, so we're, uh, got a few outstanding things going there, and then we'll roll into this. Uh, currently not guaranteed that we'll get the public assistance, but we're hoping that we will. Uh, I know what the citizens are most worried about right now is the individual assistance from FEMA, and, uh, that's why it's so important, like you said, to report those damages through I stat. If anybody doesn't have access to that, to report their damages, if they don't have a, uh, phone, or the, the means to do that, or they just don't, they need some help, we'll do it for them. Just tell them to call here to the emergency management or the county judge's office. Clay Woodward is actually helping people get their information entered. Um, some people don't want the government to have their information, and I understand that, uh, but it is very important that they report those damages so that we can make sure that we, uh, get the assistance that we, that we need and we deserve here in Hardin County. Uh, S B A assistance for, uh, low interest federal loans, we have that now. It's been approved since about April the fifteenth. And, uh, that information is on the Hardin County Emergency Management Facebook page, and it's also on the county website. I think on May the seventh is when you posted it, and I shared it this morning on my page, so that's available now. If anybody needs that type of assistance, uh, that's available to Hardin County now. I feel like we'll get the individual assistance approval soon. The, uh, governor requested to add Hardin County. Uh, it was over the weekend sometime, Saturday or Sunday, and I think once we get all of these latest numbers into the system and validated, I think that we'll get that assistance, and hopefully that comes soon. And then, of course, the big topic is mosquitoes. Uh, we're still getting quite a few phone calls and complaints about the mosquitoes. Until we get the public assistance declaration from the president, we're not gonna, the state is not gonna spray us for mosquitoes, but the health department has been working to clear all the hurdles that the state has. Uh, they've been, uh, in contact with the S H S. They came out last week and kind of went through some information. Uh, it's not an easy process to request that assistance, but we're, we're ahead of the game on that. I know they did landing counts last night. I haven't seen the results from that yet, but we should see that tomorrow, the next, or later today or tomorrow. And we'll have everything ready so that when the, uh, president, when and if he does declare Hardin County a disaster for public assistance, we'll have that ready to submit. Uh, if we don't get public assistance, then that is not gonna happen. Anything else regarding recovery?
Uh, I would say, uh, right quick, maybe not recovery, but, uh, at boys.
Anything, anything.
Uh, I'm ready for it all, Bill, with just like everybody else. I hate all this. It, it causes me to work, and I don't like work. But, on the other hand, it has all this stuff that we've gone through, and then not, not just from a road and bridge perspective, from the sheriff's office, emergency management, road and bridge, everybody else. It has made us, uh, uh, professionals in this area, for lack of other words, because I got a call just, uh, two weeks ago from a member of T M in Angelina County that was sitting in the commissioner's office asking questions about, well, how do we do this? How do we do this? Uh, and we've been through it enough to where it sharpened us on it, and, uh, I think everybody did a great job, all the departments, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Alright, good. Anything else that anybody wants to add, or any questions anybody may have?
May I have a question?
Just in that question, just now.
I wanted to update the court and let y'all know that we did have another fraud attempt on the bank account. Oh, this one they successfully, um, got twenty-eight hundred, a little over twenty-eight hundred dollars, it was a Xerox check, so it did, wasn't our positive pay. The front face of the check was not altered, so it did pass through positive pay. Someone signed their name and uploaded it at home. I did report it with the bank. We got all the paperwork and through the help of Missy, so officially we were in contact with the representative from Xerox who signed a sworn affidavit that they did not receive the check and cash it. So, um, we've been working with them to try to get the Xerox bills all straightened out. Several other checks have gone missing to Xerox, so, um, we also made a report with the sheriff's office, and Donnie Walters came by last week, because I've been trying to get all the reports to try to get the check reissued to get us back current on our bill, and, um, stated that he felt like the check had been intercepted somewhere in Houston. So that was another issue. Missy and I had been talking to Xerox, trying to figure out, was the check going to a lock box? You know, how do these checks keep going missing specifically to Xerox? So where is our problem? But, uh, we are on top of that and trying to get it settled and taken care of, and I appreciate all the other departments' help in helping us get that rectified. Also, Ms. Shirley has had some fraud on her account with all the refunds. She did not have positive pay, but since then, she's working with the bank, and I think we've got it up and running, and still have it running, so she's on positive pay now and that, so just a heads up for all the departments, stay on top of their checks. People just keep getting cracked due.
Yeah.
So, but.
The, uh, does the bank cover those fraud amounts?
Um, with the positive pay, they are working on taking care of that. I'm sure once we get, you know, everything worked out, we'll, I feel confident that there'll be a resolution to it.
Okay.
I don't know on the account that we didn't have the positive pay. I'm not real sure how that'll work on that one.
Alright, anything that we don't recover, can y'all just report that to the court of any losses that we may have?
Sure.
Okay.
Once we get to that point.
Yeah, once, once you know if, if there's not gonna be a recovery of that.
Right. I did have one of mine recovered already.
Okay.
Uh, I've had four, um, so I still have three that they're working on. Sheriff's Department's working with us. Hopefully this Debbie knows about this one. Um, but now our checks are, you know, we have so many checks, uh, written in the last few months, and they're, our checks are washed, what they call washing the checks. So it's just a.
Hers is the one original check that's been cashed three times now.
Three times, one check, because they're remote deposited, and then they can, uh, they can change it. Change it to, I am hesitant to even say what they, what they can do in public, because it is, I don't want anybody else getting in it.
It feels like it's the same thing, somebody intercepted it and then did what they do with it.
Yes, sir.
But we are on top of it, so.
Well, we know that, and thank y'all for that, too.
And, and like I said, we got the positive pay going. The sheriff's office is working with us, which I know they're probably inundated with hot check, I mean, check fraud and all that, but I feel like they're taking care of us and helping us get it figured out, you know?
Alright, thank y'all very much.
And if I could, I apologize for Commissioner Cooper for waking him up at five o'clock the other day.
P M or A M?
A M, oh, well. I didn't say that part, but I did text him. I was concerned. We had people Friday all over, you know, I have fifteen staff, and I just want, I thank all of you for everything that you do during all this. I think you're just handling everything very well. I was concerned about, you know, staff being all over the county, no power going through, you know, and just texted him and asked him, um, if we were open or, uh, closed, or another thing is I jinxed myself, Judge, whenever I told you that I was paranoid. I did go home and have water in my house that night, so if your power came back on, then I did have water again, so. But anyway, we'll make it. This is so insignificant to what all the others, the reports that Aaron's given. I just can't imagine what you all have been through, so my problems are just very minor, but I appreciate you two.
Well, like I said, unfortunately, it's become an old habit to us, and y'all just kind of jump in and do what we know has got to be done.
I did have a question if, if Aaron, um, if we did have the hail damage from a couple of weeks ago, our cars, several of us had hail damage. Um, but we have insurance, so are we still, should we still report that?
I think on your homes, yes, but on your vehicles, no.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I don't want to be too lighthearted, but I asked, uh, T M yesterday if trees fell on cars, could we get, capture that and capture that damage? And he said, no, it has to be homes, and I said, well, what if somebody, somebody lives in their car, and he said, no, still can't capture that, so. Again, not trying to be, see, just, just trying to capture all the damages that we can to give people all the help that, that's needed. So, but it, any damage to a home, if somebody's tree fell in their yard and hit their fence or hit the car or something else like that, they don't want that reported, but if it hit their home, if there's any damage to their home from a tree falling on it, if a tree busted the roof and then it rained into the home, that's, we'll capture that as well, and then of course any rising water from flooding, we definitely need to capture that too. And then all the public, roadway, bridges, force account labor, uh, not just for county employees, but for, uh, fire departments and, uh, schools, uh, water departments, cities, we need to capture all of that, so we'll be working real hard over the, uh, next few weeks to get all of that captured. Anybody have anything else? Anyone at all?
Move to adjourn.
Sir.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Y'all be safe, and we'll be back next.